I call to order the April 22nd, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Clerk Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember O'Wier.
Here.
Councilmember Root.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Rochay.
Here.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Mayor Shoemaker.
Here. Please rise as you're able and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each member of council received a copy of the March 25th, 2025 minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. We have four people, four citizen comments tonight. Let me switch over to our timer here. All right. First up is Chase Freeman. Mr. Freeman, if you would, come and state your name and address, and you can begin your comments.
Yes, Chase Freeman, 106 Tollgate Court here in Simpsonville. Okay, so city members, thank you for all the work you guys do, and I appreciate your time tonight. I want to introduce my residence here at Cedars. Do y'all want to stand or raise your... I stand with you. Yeah, let them see your faces. Good. Thank y'all for coming. So I learned that this road here is a state road, so you guys don't have any jurisdiction on that. I think it's SC DOT. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so bottom line, we need something here right at the Cedars. I understand you're going to put a red light down the street here, and then one down by the fire station, which I agree with that. Those guys are lifesavers. They're, excuse me, they're first responders, so they should have a red light there. But we're having to turn, most of us are having to turn right to get out of our subdivision. We pay taxes just like everybody else does, okay? And the way the city's going, a lot of people are parking in the church parking lot, and they're motorists and their kids or families, and either they're walking across the street to attend events, which you hadn't even got started yet because you hadn't finished yet, but there's going to be a ton of events over there. And they're parking there and they're walking downtown. So here we go again. We're competing against those guys trying to get out of our subdivision, and that's not right. Now, the red light down here, that's going to slow traffic down, but guess what? That red light's not going to stay green forever. It's going to turn red, so then the heat's going to be on us trying to get out. Now, the reason you have so much congestion down in Point Setia is because we're having to turn right to go down to Point Setia. And every 50 feet in Point Setia, there's a four-way stop. I mean, you're stopping, every, you're stopping. Help us out here. Now, like I talked to you, Governor Taylor, Mayor Taylor, we realize, we all, we all love our city, you know, we don't want us to overspend, so we realize a red light may be too expensive. But how much could two other stop signs be? Because we got one coming out, okay? So put us a stop sign, you know, going down and coming up East Georgia Road. That would help us out. Again, we pay taxes, just like everybody else does, and it's a safety issue. Since I've been here, I've been there over 20 years, I've witnessed three accidents. And I'll never forget a police officer telling me one day, he said, "John, they're not going to put any there, put anything there," excuse me, "they're not going to put anything there until a fatality happens." Oh, my God. That's, that's crazy. So you're not going to put anything there, a stop sign or a light, not saying you guys said it, until somebody dies. And I've seen three wrecks there. Yeah. So again, help us out, realize that's a state road, but, so you guys have our voice, actually, you know, to tell them we need something there, and I think I speak for all the residents. So, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Next is Carl Rotar.
Good evening. Carl Rotar, 314 Mayfly Way, Simpsonville. I'm speaking on about the proposed development, 429, 4th and 537 Harrison Bridge. The biggest problem that we have in that area is traffic, and at the planning commission meeting last week, it was, we discussed a lot about traffic in the area, both on Harrison Bridge and Fairview Road and that intersection, and how poor that is, and it's my understanding that there is supposed to be some lane changes or something at that intersection and so forth. And it's my understanding that there's supposed to be a traffic light installed across from Marydale Village and this new proposed development. And the developer had talked about the traffic light was going to help with the traffic in the area. I disagree with that wholeheartedly. I don't think that a traffic light is going to help with anything on that unless we do something with the roads. And it kind of gets me to where I want to talk about is, with all the development going on, I understand I'm one of the people that moved down from the Northeast 20 years ago to get away from snow and the cold, and I wanted to come down to the Carolinas and ended up here in Simpsonville. Great place, happy with, with being here, but I would like to see, not only for the city of Simpsonville, but the county of Greenville, state of South Carolina, somebody start to plan ahead and understand that we've got a lot of people moving in, and there's going to be a lot of development, but the infrastructure is not there. Water pressure in our development is not as strong as it should be. Just had a meeting, I'm on our board of directors for the HOA, had a meeting with the gentleman that does our sprinkler system. There's not enough water pressure for the sprinkler systems in our development to work the way it's supposed to work. So now we've got another development that's in the process of being done across the street, this new proposed development. Infrastructure, traffic, there's a ton of problems with all of this development that's going on, and I did send a letter to all of you, and Aaron did respond to, to my email, so I appreciate that. But like I said, my biggest concern is with traffic and infrastructure, not only in our development area, but across the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rotar. Next is Mark McQuigan.
Hello, I'm Mike McQuigan. I live at 109 Sunlit Drive in Simpsonville. I live in the cottages of Harrison Bridge East, which is where Carl lives, and most of our homeowners there are very concerned about traffic, but I want to talk about a different subject, and that's education, school district. We're not against development. I wouldn't live in Simpsonville right now if it hadn't been for development. I would tell you, I lived on the east side for 30 years, but decided to move to Simpsonville. But the school district, you know, they have a long-range plan that is used to find out a lot of information to give to you tonight. We obviously have a lot of massive growth going on in Simpsonville right now. We're getting a new Bryson Middle School, Fountain Inn High School's recently opened, Fork Shoals Elementary is currently being expanded. We have a five, looking at five-year estimates, that the school district, they already show overcrowding, especially at the high school level. And there are no new high schools planned right now. Two of the largest high schools in Greenville County are, serve our area, Hillcrest and Woodmont. Those are number two and number three. And Maldon's number one, by the way. The property between the cottages and publics is owned for Fork Shoals Elementary, Ralph Chandler Middle, and Woodmont High School. The five-year projections show Ralph Chandler to be deficient, 11 seats, and Woodmont, 206 seats. These deficiencies are based on current building and doesn't factor in anything new, any new multifamily developments. They could produce many more students. Obviously, it depends on the price point of the housing. The information that I'm getting you from is from the long-range plan, is used for five-year projections, shows subdivisions, which 50 or more lots are still showing many lots left to build on. These subdivisions are already in existence. Hillcrest High School shows over 2,300 lots left to build on. Woodmont has over 4,000 lots left to build on. We truly want to support education. I don't think we can afford a huge increase in taxes to build new schools. So this development with a large number of units will have a huge impact now, in the future on our schools and the ability to accommodate our students. The growth comes, obviously, at a cost to all of us, not just the developers that are funding the buildings. Thank you so much for your time.
Next is Phyllis Buchanan.
I read a quote, this is by an anonymous...
If you would, state your name and address, please.
Okay. Honorable mayor and city council members, my name is Phyllis Buchanan. Even a turtle gets nowhere unless it sticks its neck out. That's why I'm here. I live at 108 Mayfly Way at cottages of Harrison Bridge with my husband of 58 years, Butch. We moved to this retirement community in July of 2021 because of its close proximity to our daughter's family in Fountain Inn. The average age of our neighborhood is anywhere from 70 to 75. My husband and I are 78 years old, and so a lot of people are older than we are. According to Siri, how much you depend on her, I don't know. Senior citizens population in Simpsonville makes up approximately 30% of the population. Now, I'm not sure where that number comes from, but that's what, that's what she said when I asked her. The commercial property at the entrance to our community is comprised, now this is, this is outside our gate, an orthodontist, a pediatric complex, two private schools, not one but two. The second one is under roof and will soon be open. All of these people, all of the traffic going in and out of those businesses, from what I understand and the way the, the plan is laid out, they will empty their traffic into our common entrance. And on our side, on cottages east, we have one entrance, no exit. There is no emergency exit. That was a big thing on the planning commission. We have one entrance. Now, we're having all the commercial property will actually be at our gate coming in. The college green development across the street, bordering Marydale, will consist of mixed-use property, including more commercial property. The proposed annexation we are discussing tonight is divided into single-family homes, town homes, and commercial property. Now, this is the thing that upsets me the most. We do not need more commercial property. We have got commercial property all over Simpsonville, and this is making a nightmare for us. Our traffic is already difficult at best and impossible at certain times of the day. When this second school opens and when the pediatric office is open there, in addition to the school that is already there and the orthodontist, we will not be able to get in and out of our own community. If you approve this plan of overcrowding and traffic congestion, we will soon be unable to drive under these conditions. Therefore, our way of life as retired citizens will be drastically impaired. I appreciate you hearing us.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. That concludes our citizen comments. Item six is staff reports, beginning with 6A, Community Relations Report from Justin Campbell, our community relations specialist. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening. The e-newsletter is progressing along with our two main stories about our new city administrator, and our amazing Halleen response from all of our different departments are finished. I'm waiting on a go-ahead for announcing our acts for the music series and food truck rodeo. I'd like to include that in the spring edition of the newsletter because the summer edition would be too late. Our Simply Proud Cleanup Day had a decent turnout on Saturday, 26 volunteers. They went to Grand View, Fairview Road, parts of downtown. We had a small group of young children from a homeschool co-op who picked up in Heritage Park because it's safer for kids to pick up in a park. The city's next cleanup will be in August. That will be hot, but in keeping up with our Adopt a Street program participants who are supposed to do quarterly cleanups, I figure it's only right for the city to have the same expectation of itself to do quarterly citywide cleanups. Speaking of the Adopt a Street program, we have three new additional signs, Head Street, Point Setia Neighborhood, and Richardson Street. Those were delayed because of the Halleen response and prioritization by Public Works of cleaning up debris, but Public Works Department has done a great job in working with me to make sure these signs get done, especially Public Works Assistant Director Pete Lapu. Love working with him. There was a sign that needed correcting that had been put up that was misspelled, and he did it right away. So I really appreciate Public Works for that. Mark your calendar for May 26, the Memorial Day Ceremony at 11 o'clock at the Arts Center. Our keynote speaker will be U.S. Army Reserve Sergeant Active John Salinas, who's also a representative of One Blood. He, One Blood does some blood drives with us, and he's going to talk about how restrictions, decades-long restrictions for giving blood have been recently lifted, and it allows a lot of veterans who formerly could not donate blood can now donate blood. So I think that'll be a really good message for all of us to hear at the ceremony. The Youth Advisory Board had a meeting tonight. We have a new member, Mr. Ellis English, a junior at Hillcrest High, which means we now have two Hillcrest High students on the Youth Advisory Board. We have about four seniors graduating out in a few weeks, so we'll be doing applications, trying to get in more members, but we will still have enough after they graduate to continue, even if we didn't get any more members. I can vouch for Mr. English, super smart, super articulate, a go-getter, basically found me through the mayor, met with me as soon as possible, and so unless there is an objection by council, he is our newest member to the Youth Advisory Board. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell?
I just have one comment. I met Mr. English from his sister, who is at Hillcrest Middle School, who came to do a video interview with me for the school. Sharp kid. And she says, "My brother's really interested in government. Can he talk to you?" And, two sharp kids, I need to meet their parents. They are very, very smart kids, and so glad to have him on our Youth Advisory Board. So thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, 6B, Economic Development Report from John Derby, our Planning Director. Mr. Derby.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We've got the staff report for, it comes since January through March. Nothing too alarming to report. Going to see what April holds. April last year was our best year as far as permits coming in. Pretty typical this time of year, coming out of the winter months, time construction starts to pick up. Planning Commission, we didn't meet this much so far, except for March and April. March was a rezoning on College Street, which was already coming before y'all last month. The text amendment, which will be coming to you tonight again. Two annexations, one in March got pushed back to April. That is the West Georgia Road Church and the Harrison Bridge Project, both those I'll be speaking about later tonight. Those were recommended. Approval, four to one on both of those. And for the record, apologize for the incorrect of the voting on that, trying to get the report out kind of last minute. I kind of put it down as five to zero. It was four to one recommend on both of those. Also had a fenestration request in April for an outparcelled medical facility at the Martin's Farm Development. We have no border zoning appeals so far this year. So I can answer any questions you might have.
Council? Thank you, Mr. Derby. 6C, Financial Report from Christine Farino, our Finance Director. Director Farino.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few highlights from the March 2025 financial report. Year-to-date revenues for general fund through March were $19 million, which is 77% of the budget. Year-to-date expenses are $29 million, which is 119% of the budget, but that also includes $11.3 million towards the municipal complex. Year-to-date revenues for the sewer fund through March were $2.6 million, which is 118% of the budget. Year-to-date expenses are $576,000, which is 46% of the budget. Year-to-date revenues for the special revenue fund through March are $4.4 million, which is 112% of the budget, with year-to-date expenses at $2.6 million, which is 137% of the budget. Year-to-date revenues for Public Works Enterprise Fund through March were $1.6 million, which is 102% of the budget, with expenses at $851,000, which is 66% of the budget. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Council? Thank you, Director Farino.
Thank you.
6D, The City Administrator Report. Diana Graceley. Administrator Graceley?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief because I know we have a lot of business before council this evening. On the city administrator report, you will notice that I've highlighted areas where there are updates to provide to you from previous reports. I would like to point out, and some of you may have noticed in the Fire Department report, that the Fire Department did receive a grant from Firehouse Subs for Polaris Side-by-Side, and I just want to commend them for seeking outside funding for much-needed equipment. That will be used a lot at Heritage Park, particularly during concert events, also here at our park, for various things as we have events and more activity in this park. They are even able to surplus the existing one for almost what they paid for it 20 years ago. So they've done a really remarkable job maintaining that as well to get proceeds back out of the cell of that. An update on the crosswalk at East Curtis at the fire station, the C-Fund grant was awarded, and I have included the cost for the mast arms in the proposed FY26 budget. All of the other expenses for the pedestrian signal, the striping, and the emergency signal will be paid through C-Funds. FEMA reimbursement update, we, I signed today the complete reimbursements for CAT A and CAT B, which are the forced labor accounts and any contract work for debris removal. That equals about $1.8 million that we'll be getting 100% of back from the federal government for all of our expenses incurred for debris removal. I have also applied for two additional FEMA grants through what they call the 404 program that will be for some stormwater and flooding issues occurring in Point Setia more regularly, not as a result of Halleen. We are repairing some of those culvert, where we had, culverts where we had damage through the FEMA reimbursement, but this would be two separate grants that would help with recurring stormwater issues in those two areas. Unfortunately, it looks like the General Assembly is discontinuing any earmarks in this, in their proposed FY26 budget. So unless something changes, I know that a couple of General Assembly members are trying to help get a budget proviso in for us because most of our downtown improvements as far as roads and sidewalks are on DOT roads and sidewalks. So, you know, we emphatically believe that SC DOT should be sharing that cost with the city, and it shouldn't fall solely on the city of Simpsonville to incur the costs for that work. We will see how things go. I have been looking at potential follow-up bond issuance with installment purchase revenue bonds that could be backed up with hospitality and accommodations tax revenues. So the money is, we do have borrowing capacity in order to do that. If council wants to go in that direction, that, to me, would be a last resort. So we'll see what occurs over the next couple of months before we pursue that any further. The park dedication for here is scheduled for June 26. We'll provide more details as they become available. We are continuing with sewer improvements throughout the city that are part of the $10 million Skip Grant from Rural Infrastructure Authority in the state level, which is helping us address a lot of aging sewer lines through either replacement or cured-and-place lining to keep those sewer lines functional for decades to come. And on road resurfacing, unfortunately, because of the cost of asphalt and having received bids back for the resurfacing, it, we were forced to reduce the number of roads that are going to be resurfaced this year from what I had previously reported. The previous report was based on estimated costs, and the actual costs when the bids came in were much higher. So you have a new road resurfacing list in your report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Administrator Graceley.
Thank you, Mayor.
Each of our department heads are here this evening to make themselves available to answer questions from council. They have submitted reports. Are there any questions from council for any of our department heads? All right, thank you. I believe you're expected to stay this evening for the budget discussion, so I can't turn you loose like I would usually do, so we'll move on. Item seven, Business. These are items that are anticipated to be put on the agenda of the next business meeting if they are approved here tonight. All four of the items on our agenda this evening would require a first and second reading at a business meeting. So what we're doing tonight is deciding whether to move those items on to the business 7A, AXZ 2025-01, Proposed Annexation of the Property Located at 1601 West Georgia Road. Mr. Derby, our Planning Direction Director, will you summarize, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm switching over to the slide report.
Okay, hold on.
John, can you lift your mic up? Is that better? Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your screen in green is the location for this request. This is West Georgia Road. Above that's Barker Road. This is out past the East Standing Springs intersection. 1601 West Georgia Road. The current zoning is RS. RS in Greenville County. The applicant is seeking ROI, residential office and institution. They are proposing a church at this location. It's right around four acres. The meeting was held last week that discussed this for Planning Commission. There was a large showing for this item as well as the next item. That's better. A lot of discussions that came out from the public was regarding the stormwater runoff. Obviously, traffic in that area is a concern, as well as the exit off of Barker Road onto West Georgia Road is kind of a, not a true 90-degree angle. So those items were brought up, discussed. The applicant was there tonight and presented their proposal of what they want to do there for their church and the services. Planning Commission did recommend approval, four to zero, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. A motion is in order? Councilmember Hutchings.
Mayor and Council, I'll make a motion to approve AXZ-2025-01, Proposed Annexation of the Property Located at 1601 West Georgia.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hutchings with a second from Councilmember Root. Councilmember Root.
Is this church going to have services on Wednesday nights?
The applicant explained they would service for eight hours during the week. I can't remember exactly if it's two days, four and four, or just one day, eight hours. Actually, I have the applicant here if you want to speak to him directly.
Is it just Sundays?
Just Sundays.
Morning, night, or just one service?
Sunday morning, 9:30 a.m. until 11:00 p.m.
Okay. Typically, traffic doesn't affect on Sundays.
Councilmember, if you would, pull your microphone closer to you, please.
Traffic, typically, Sunday traffic doesn't pose a problem. Traffic, typically, Sunday traffic doesn't pose a problem. That's why I was asking if it was a Wednesday night. You said there was much discussion of water runoff. Was that primarily from the neighborhood that sits behind there? They showed up at the meetings and spoke?
One person did speak that lives in that neighborhood, Morning Mist. They did talk, but it did have some water issues upon their property, and they were concerned what this would develop, if that would increase that, so.
And everyone in that subdivision was, delivered a letter from city?
Every person abouting the property being annexed was notified, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselmember Pinkerton?
Yeah, a few questions. Mr. Derby, one. On the GIS map, if you click on this particular property, it actually shows it to be in the City of Weldon. And actually, the property that's south on the maps is Malden. But any idea why it would be in Weldon? And Weldon's not even close.
Correct. That might be just an error with the county's GIS system.
Well, when it's on a public record, it means something. So it was a little bit concerning. I just wondered if it was actually in another city already. Big concerns, though, are this 20-foot-wide annex strip to tie into this neighborhood. Was this brought up by the developer to be able to annex into the city with this strip?
No, sir. We were discussing this with the applicant. We explained to him that they're not contiguous with the city. The only way to do that is to have an extension from the actual boundaries. They were discussing with the person behind them and explained to them that part of the process to annex is to be contiguous, and that person agreed to allow that strip to go through their portion of the property.
Okay. Well, it's also concerning, because Morning Mist is like a little island out there away from the city, and it's tied by a causeway over to the city somehow. And I don't know when that happened, maybe back five or six years ago. Do you have any idea how that became? Because it actually goes through other people's property and across the street. So, I mean, does those little annex strips require taxation to those people? I mean, how does that, how does that work?
They do not receive, I think it went back to 2016 or '17, before my time. On West Georgia Road, if you go back towards the city, there's a property zone, Business General. The person approached the city about annexing that portion of Morning Mist, same process. They reached out and spoke to property owners in the closest proximity to the nearest point of the city. They explained to them the process of being, for them to be annexed, they would need that 20-foot strip. My predecessor did speak to those property owners and explain to them the process, because when that happens, people have the impression that they're going to be annexed as well. And that's not true. It's just a small portion. They don't receive any services. Their tax bill doesn't reflect. It's basically in a visible line that goes to their property.
I guess that's just a little concerning on how we get there. You know, we've spoken about the size of Simpsonville before, and how there's not any more land to get, but shoestring and property along the way to get from here to there. And actually, when you annex this property in, it then gives more and more area of potential contiguous land to be in Simpsonville. So that's concerning. It's already in the county. Is there any reason why it wouldn't have, the developer, the owner, wouldn't just stay in the county? This adds to our fire district. It's actually in the other fire district at this point. I mean, what's the advantage of being in the city?
The city of services they receive would be police at this location. I'm not too sure of the regulations of what they would be denied as far as they use when it comes to a church. I know churches are looked at a little differently about where they can go. We had one that went into our industrial district. So there's kind of, they have a little more of a push when it comes to freedom of religion, where they can set up. As far as that, it's being processed, it's being developed in the city. We like to say we do a little better, more efficient job when it comes to development and permitting. So that's one of the other reasons of why they wanted to be in the city.
Yeah, I guess my final concern is, and things happen. We annexed this in now. I'm assuming the buying of this property is based on Counsel's approval. But if it was approved, and then something happens, and it's happened before, and all of a sudden, funding goes away, we, they can't build a church, or they couldn't build anything for that matter, then we've got a piece of property that's zoned now and annexed into the city that anybody could come build on, basically, based on our zoning. So for that, for those reasons, especially this shoestring and things in, I'm hesitant to vote yes on this one.
Counselmember O'Rear?
Yeah, Counselmember Pinkerton brought up a lot of my points, so that'll cut this a little shorter. One concern I had, one, I love churches, grew up going to church, go to church. I have no problem with the church being there. Problem you have is, you know, I'm making the habit to go to Planning Commission meetings, sit in the back and listen. All right, there you go. Is that better? Biggest concern I heard from everyone, it was kind of a general concern, some specific to adjacent neighborhoods, but then you said something that was a little concerning that had to do with the shoestrings, the 20-foot wide. Did I hear it right? That's just kind of an imaginary area. It doesn't, nothing gets altered. You're just getting permission from the person who actually owns it to draw an imaginary line to another contiguous property. Is that what I'm hearing, is I'm right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that leads to the, I call it the Spider-Man effect. You know, you've got this one, then, and I guess the question is, how long can a 20-foot-wide contiguous line be? Is there, is there a rule? I mean, an actual rule, 100 feet's as far as you can go to be contiguous, or is it as far as you need to go to get to the contiguous property?
I'm not too sure, but I'm pretty sure it's pretty far. The City of Greer is pretty known for that as well.
Yeah, and it's kind of a thought, and I guess the basic question is, and I hate to phrase it this way, we heard what's in it for him, what's in it for the city? What does this do for the city, for the taxpayers of the city, if we're to annex this property in? Because I mean, the church is like a lot of other, their nonprofits are not taxed. So that part goes away, and that's not the concern. It's just it needs to be a balanced relationship. And I don't know what's in it for the city at this point, and the taxpayers of the city. The one thing I get concerned about is the imaginary, the imaginary lines that we just keep spidering out. Because if you look at our city map, that's what it looks like heading out west Georgia and over, and Counselmember Root's area down 14. So it just looks really funny. So, but those would be my concerns. I'm really concerned about the tentacles. I call them tentacles. So, thanks.
Counselmember O'Shea?
Echoing what's already been said, I am also concerned about the 20-foot strip of land that's being purchased so that they can make a continuous, yeah, cotton.
Contiguous.
Thank you. To the city's boundaries. It just doesn't seem like a great way to do business. Seems a little shady. That said, the way it's zoned right now, residential suburban, we could be looking at an entire housing complex going up there. Is that, am I correct about that?
They're allowed to build single-family there.
So in the county, they could build single-family homes on this acreage?
That's correct.
Do you know about how many they could put there?
RS, I believe, is 25,000 square foot lots. So not too many.
Thank you.
On the motion to approve AXZ-2025-01, Proposed Annexation of the Property Located at 1601 West Georgia Road, and move this item to the agenda of the next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes? All opposed signify by saying no. No. Lieutenant Clark, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselmember O'Rear? Counselmember Root?
Yes.
Counselmember Williams?
Yes.
Counselmember O'Shea?
No.
Counselmember Pinkerton?
No.
Counselmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
That motion carries by a vote of four yeses to three nos, and will go to the agenda of the next business meeting. Item 7B, AXZ-2025-02, Proposed Annexation of the Property Located at 429 and 537 Harrison Bridge Road. Mr. Derby, will you summarize, please? And I will call up your presentation. Well, Derby, is this the right one?
No, sir. Same one you just had up.
Oh, go back to the other one?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the next item. This is Harrison Bridge Road. This is the 429, 537 Harrison Bridge Road, just west of the intersection of Harrison Bridge and Fairview Road. This is a little over 71 acres. It is currently zoned PD in the county, which is pretty much in line with what we have as ID. What they are looking to do is to develop this as a mixed-use, commercial along the front, residential on the back, as innovative development ID within the city. We're looking at 210 units. These will be mixed between detached and attached, varying sizes throughout the back. There will be out parcels along the front. Main entrance coming in off of Harrison Bridge Road. This is their concept plan that was provided in your staff report. This did go last week to Planning Commission. There was, again, a large public audience there. A lot of people spoke regarding this. Some of them spoke tonight. The topics were about traffic, infrastructure, this intersection where it would be tying in Harrison Bridge Road, as well as Fairview Road, Harrison Bridge, current and future proposed traffic impact. Planning Commission did vote recommendation four to one, and approval for this to come before you tonight. I do have the applicant here tonight, and they would request to do a little small presentation to go a little more detail of what this development will entail if Counsel sees fit.
Okay, let's go ahead and have that presentation then.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of Counsel. My name is Paul Harrison. I work with Blue Water Civil Design. My address is 718 Lowndes Hill Road, that's Greenville, 29607. Thank you for your time tonight and allowing us to present this project. I'll try to be brief. I know some of you attended the Planning Commission meeting last week. The, I'm here tonight speaking for the applicant, for the annexation, and for the zoning classification to an ID zoning. John did a good job kind of overlaying the site and everything. I provided some slides with some placeholders of, kind of get your bearings of where you are, kind of located near that intersection of Fairview Road and Harrison Bridge Road. The property obviously is currently in the Greenville County Zone PD, which is a planned development. That planned development was approved for commercial and residential units. Basically, the same concept that we're outlining here tonight, and that you'll see on the, on this slide with our new, with our new concept plan. We did decrease the density of that approved plan. We went from 239 residential units to 210 units. Let me clarify, too, that my company nor the applicant was involved with that original PD approval. We didn't have any involvement with that, nor have we been involved with any previous applications that have been submitted to the city on this property. And one of the main features that John kind of talked about was the lighted intersection along Harrison Bridge Road. So our new Boulevard Road that we're illustrating on this plan lines up with the Boulevard Road for Marydale Village. That will be a lighted intersection. We've had a traffic impact analysis done. We will have to provide the left-turn lane into the development off of Harrison Bridge Road. The signal is one of the main improvements, and then there were also some improvements at the intersection of Fairview Road and Harrison Bridge Road. We do, we have increased the open space that we're providing for the community. The previous PD approval designated roughly 13 acres of open space. We've increased that to 20 acres. We rearranged the amenity center. Was originally shown up toward Harrison Bridge Road at the front of the site. We've relocated that amenity center overlooking the large existing pond that exists on-site and will remain in place. Tried to incorporate more walking trails and interconnectivity throughout the whole neighborhood for the use of, for the use of the whole neighborhood. We plan to have five different price points and five different products within the community. So there's two attached products that we're planning on doing, and then there's three detached products that we're planning on doing. A lot of the, some of the, some of the attached and detached will be an alley-loaded product, which you can kind of see illustrated as those private alleys in between some of the main Boulevard Roads. Future connectivity is, is, is a, is a main focal point for us. We know that there's some other large parcels to the south of this parcel, and then a larger parcel to the north, too, along Harrison Bridge Road. So having future potential connectivity points, and basically making sure that we get our development and our traffic back to a lighted intersection, which is the safest intersection that you could ever have. And that's where we prefer people to funnel to, and I think that signalization at that intersection will go a long way, with also helping some existing congestion that may exist at the intersection of Harrison Bridge Road and Fairview Road right now. We like the location of this site in relation to existing commercial and retail services in the area, and to try to promote, you know, pedestrian traffic to and from those areas. We're proposing sidewalks along Harrison Bridge Road, and also we're looking at potential avenues for pedestrian connectivity back over to the Publix and Hobby Lobby. So that's a work in progress that we're pursuing. And I guess another important feature is the fact that this does fit within the City of Simpson Future Land Use Mount. I think the cottages at Harrison Bridge, I know there were some speakers that spoke about that development, with the Future Land Use Mount calls that out as medium-density residential with potential density on the magnitude of seven units per acre. I would say we're well within that. With our proposal, we're just over three units per acre for the, for the property. And it also fits in, we feel like, with the extraterritorial mounts that, that the City of Simpsonville has designated this property to be. I'll cycle through some of these slides real quick. This basically talks about the improvements at our site intersection along Harrison Bridge Road, and the intersection of Fairview Road as well. Basically, 7,000 linear feet of new public road, roughly 3,200 linear feet of private right-of-way, public water, public sewer. We have all the will-serv letters in your packet for fire, cable, power, and gas, and I've already kind of touched on the road improvements that we're proposing. This is an example of some of the amenities within the, within the community. Pocket parts, totlot, walking trails, pickleball, a nice amenity center with more of a junior Olympic-sized pool and nice cabana area. This is kind of some slides of the units. So these are the attached products, the 30-foot-wide townhome product and the 20-foot-wide townhome product. The upper product is a front-loaded product, and the bottom product is the alley-loaded product. This is the detached product, the 30 and 40-foot detached product. This is the detached product, the 30- and 40-foot detached product. The bottom is the front-loaded, and then the top illustrations are the alley-loaded product. And this is the elevations for the 50-foot-wide single-family detached lots, all front-loaded product. This is an illustration of some of the commercial and professional offices up front. These are just some of the renderings. We -- I think the way we wrote it in the statement of intent, you know, we anticipate and we expect that we have some professional offices, medical offices up front, but reserved in one of those retail buildings for more of a neighborhood restaurant, some type of neighborhood commercial use. This is just the City of Simpsonville Future Land Use Mount. And you can see the property highlighted in between. And this is where I talked about the medium-intensity neighborhood. You can see highlighted the cottages at Harrison Bridge in the 7.3 units per acre. This is the extraterritorial land use mount, where it basically has activity areas or commercial uses up front and neighborhood in the rear, which is basically what we're illustrating on our plan. So with that being said, that kind of ends our presentation. But I'm sure there may be questions for city council, and I'd be glad to answer any of those questions. I don't know if Chad wants to step up and say anything. Chad's with DRB. They're our client. And I just want to kind of really end on this, that this is a six-to-eight-year project, maybe a five-to-seven-year project, depending on how things are permitting goes, development goes. You know, this is not something that, if approved by city council, that within a week or two, we're out doing grading work on the property. This is a long process, you know, between design and construction. You know, you look at it 18 months to two years before you ever see the first building permit being pulled on this property. So there's some traffic items, improvements that we're working on that will be in place before you see the majority of this site developed. So with that being said, I don't know if Chad wants to add anything, but I'd be glad to answer any questions from city council. And kind of turning, if I may.
Good evening. Chad Carson at 247 Mercer in Simpsonville. I'll keep it brief because I know it's a lot to take in and a lot to digest. Just want to kind of reiterate that we are local. We're not some out-of-town developer that comes in here and just wants to throw homesites down or whatever. We know the area. We love the area. Like many others at DRB homes, we've been here our whole lives. So we've seen the area grow. We know that traffic is a concern. We know that there's genuine concerns, and we try to take all those into consideration. Just briefly, traffic has obviously been a big thing that we heard in front of Planning Commission. So we took the opportunity. I've tried to drive it every morning and night around rush hour, so 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So I actually had a drone footage that I believe was submitted to you to show yesterday morning and afternoon. So what we found is that at the intersection of Harrison Bridge and Fairview AM hours, every vehicle at the intersection cycles through or gets through within one traffic signal cycle. PM hours, it's a little bit higher traffic. So within two traffic signals, all the traffic gets through. So that's just that we take it into consideration. We know there's a lot of traffic there. I live off Woodford Road. I live in traffic every day. But we genuinely take it into consideration and have just kind of wanted to put a visual of what actually happens and not just sit up here and tell you what the traffic report says. So it sped up a little bit. There's a time lapse, so you don't have to watch all 30, 40 minutes. You know, it just kind of shows where, you know, traffic gets through through one traffic light cycle. Anyways, again, just kind of wanted to say our part on this. And as Paul said, happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you. If you gentlemen will stand by, and Mr. Derby as well, a motion is in order. Counsel? There's no counsel member -- Councilmember Williams.
I make a motion to move AXZ-2025-02, proposed annexation of the property located at 429 and 537 Harrison Bridge Road onto the next business meeting.
Second. So I have a motion from Councilmember Williams with a second from Mayor Shoemaker. Discussion? Councilmember Pinkerton.
Yeah, let me start with traffic a little bit first because you brought it up to me, and I'll give you my example as well. Traffic is like a math problem. It's volume and time. So I live right around the corner, and I have a friend that lives out on Fairview Road, 12 miles away in Lawrence County. If I go to his house to hunt and try to get there before sunrise, I can get there in less than 20 minutes. If I have a 6 o'clock reservation at Stella's on Friday afternoon, I can't make it there in 20 minutes. So the traffic's really bad. The other part about the traffic that I'll bring up, too, is I did look at the traffic study. And everything that they show as improvements over your phasing really doesn't improve anything. The signalization there, that intersection rates D and E, and occasionally maybe a C. But if, over time, they do the improvements, it doesn't get any better. Even though you condense more people in there, it doesn't get better. And then, you know, as everybody's concerned, if this property gets annexed in, and then the next property, and the next property, and the next property, SEDOT will never be able to address that problem. And they can't now, really. There's no way to widen it. The only thing you could actually widen it is once you hit Fairview Road going out, you could go four lanes there. But that doesn't really help the intersection or all the -- everything that's condensed right there. So that's it on traffic. Switch gears just a little bit. So I'm assuming this property has not been bought and it's based on approval of annexation. Is that correct? All right. So the owner of the property, would he care from a price standpoint whether it was zoned ID or whether it was zoned RE?
I'm sure he would. And I definitely don't want to speak for him, though. Mr. Harland was available at the Planning Commission meeting.
I mean, if price is the price, right? I mean, you're not going to take anything less for the land. I guess my point is, would you consider changing this ID to an RE where the density of the property would be a residential estate? Would that be worth your efforts?
I don't necessarily want to speak for Chad, but that's not what his group does. I mean, they don't develop residential estate lots. And that's not what the -- you know, the property's currently approved for this density. And I'm sure that the price of the land may or could be dictated based off of that, the current zoning of the property and what you could build on the property. So that's a hypothetical that I don't think Chad would be able to answer because that's -- he doesn't play in that sandbox. And I don't think that you can pay the same amount for the property to build this many units versus there's a direct correlation in how many units you can get on the property versus the value of the property.
I'll only bring it up. I just assumed, that's my assumption, that the value of the property is what it is. But from a density standpoint, going to something residential estate, which would be much more palatable probably to this council, but also to the citizens as well because then you're talking about nice family homes that are on something around 16, 17,000 square feet with a frontage. And it would make a lot more sense from a city building. But I'm assuming that's not possible for your guys' development.
No, I don't. I mean, just if you want my personal opinion, I don't think anybody would be looking for an estate lot located, surrounded by high-density residential that's already currently there and commercial as well.
Well, I live in Point Steady, and we're RE. And I tell you, when a house goes for sale, it goes up very fast. Those are some of my questions. I will say one other thing about the traffic. The traffic light that's getting installed for the other property that you guys will share, the only thing that that benefits is for the two developments getting in and out. Doesn't help the rest of the roadway. So I appreciate the efforts of trying to make traffic better, but it just never will, despite any of the additions that SEOD promised you based on what you're going or your right-hand or left-hand turn lanes. I just don't see it happening. Thanks.
Councilmember Root.
I will echo Councilmember Pinkerton's about the light. I was going to bring up the light because the light does if we put the light in right now, it doesn't fix the problem with traffic. And I'm looking at, when we go out in public, what we hear is traffic. What can you do for traffic? Unfortunately for us, our hands are tied because most of the busy roads are state and county roads. And I feel like I passed the buck, but it is what it is. What I don't want to do is take something I don't have control on and asperdate the problem by adding what probably looks like 500 potential new cars. That's just, that's two average cars per unit, and then you're putting some businesses there. Let's just say, on average, 100 cars a day. That's 500 cars a day coming to that area. And now our traffic's worse. So instead of coming into office trying to fix a traffic problem, I would be creating by voting to make the traffic worse in what I think is the worst, most populated intersection in the city. I voted against the one that came in there last year or a year and a half ago, the one across the street. And that was fourth, I think, of this size, maybe even less than a fourth. I voted that one down because I didn't think that that area can sustain that. And that's not even up yet. And I think that we're about to see that intersection become even worse when that one starts operating. The other thing that concerns me is the two properties south and north of yours. When those become available, those will also be more than likely developed. And now you're talking about adding 1,000 cars to that area. And again, this is a road that we cannot widen. There's not enough stoplights to put on that road, in my opinion, to fix the traffic now, nonetheless adding that amount of cars. So I -- there's -- I've got major concerns with this. And I think I told you that in the meeting. I'm not, you know, going to tell you anything I didn't tell you before just with the traffic. I think your plan looks good. Anywhere else, maybe on the outskirts of the city, you know, I'd obviously be thinking a little differently. I think where you're wanting to put it causes a major, major problem for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Roche.
You said that this had been approved in the county, correct?
That's correct.
Is it in a state of approval right now?
It is.
Okay. The information I have is that it was shot down in January.
In January? I mean, there's a current plan approved on the property, not our current plan.
I'm talking about with the county?
Yeah, with the county. There's a current plan and a current PD approval that was approved in 2008 on the property.
Okay.
And when I was referring to the reduction of the density in the plan, I was referring to that 2008-approved plan that's currently in place.
Okay, but in the third reading, it was denied by the January council, correct?
This one, not this one. This one.
The 210 was denied.
That's correct. Our new plan was denied at third reading because of mainly the main points they had was they were concerned about the one Boulevard access coming back to Harrison Bridge Road.
Across the street in 2023, this council, I did not, going on record, did not vote to approve it, approved 320 units across the street. That's happening. There's nothing that can be done to stop that at this point. So whatever we're experiencing in the way of traffic now, add 320 homes to that intersection. Two cars per home. I don't know how many trips per day. I've looked at the traffic studies from that. I went back and looked at those, and then I looked at these. And the problem that I have with this development is that it seems to be relying heavily upon the fact that this Cottage Green development is going to do a certain amount of work, a traffic light, before your development gets started. But the actual timing by the dates looks like it's going to happen all at the same time. I can't even imagine the nightmare that's going to happen at this intersection. I feel for the people that live over there already. And for the same reason I voted no the last time, I'm going to vote no this time. We just can't handle any more residential development or commercial development on Harrison Bridge Road with the current infrastructure. SEDOT does not plan to widen. The only plans that we have, and they're actually not in writing with the city, the developers for Cottage Green stood here and, you know, whipped those out of their back pocket right before we voted. And I feel like members of council that did approve leaned heavily on that fact that we might get a light faster if we approve this development than we would if we don't. And so what's done is done, but I can't add to the problem. I feel for everybody that lives over there. I avoid shopping there because once you're in, you can't get out. And the water pressure, we're already having problems on Westwood with some of the development that's going on at the end of Davenport Road with water pressure. And I've been calling and trying to get that worked out. Of course, they claim there is no problem. We're now experiencing it over in Hunter's Woods with water pressure. Just the development is taking such a toll on us. It's impacting the quality of life for the homeowners and business owners that are here already. And honestly, I hate the word moratorium, and I don't even think we could do it. But if we could, I would. That's my feeling.
Councilmember O'Rear.
Yeah, I think when you speak fourth or fifth, a lot of things get covered. But I wanted to kind of point out, I think a lot of things got touched on. Part of the problem is, I know John and Charlene, they work really hard. They work on a lot of things at the same time. And those things stack up. And we watched, and like I said, I know Councilmember Root, Councilmember Roche, and Councilmember Hutchings voted against Marydale across the street. And in the mayor's defense, his vote was not needed that night because the three outgoing members of council voted to allow that. And that's what people, some people know that's coming. And like you were pointing out, you've got a year, a year and a half, two years to get permits out. Well, they're starting to clear. They're going to pile their number of houses in there. And then yours are going to follow behind. We're not going to have a widened road, a stoplight. I asked Mr. Derby, and he pointed out, it's 2,100 feet from the Fairview Road intersection, 0.4 of a mile. That's going to help the people getting in and out of the neighborhood. That's not helping the traffic at Fairview and Harrison Bridge Road. The biggest thing, and I think Councilmember Roche hit it on, is quality of life. Simpsonville, I mean, we're going to grow. We're going to continue to grow. But you've got to pick the right times and the right spots. It's not fair to people who have been here a long time, who've put, you know, their tax money into this community for decades, invested in homes, to get piled in on to where they don't even want to leave their house anymore. I'll be honest with you. My wife and I, when we moved back here years ago, we looked at the cottages at Harrison Bridge. And we nixed it solely because of the traffic. And that was years ago. It's exponentially worse now. And I just don't see how it can get better. You know, the county, I think Councilmember Roche pointed out, the counties had their say in this. say in this, and, and we are now. And, you know, I'm not gonna be able to do this to the people of Simpsonville and pile in what at the time, what I think if, if both of these are completed without anything going on down the road, you're looking at another 600 units, which could be another thousand to 1,500 vehicles a day, and it's just, it's not doable.
Counsel? Councilmember Hutchings.
This is a beautiful plan. I love the plan itself and in the right place. I think it would be wonderful as an ID. I live right off of Fairview Road, and I travel this intersection every day. Right now, it's, it's ridiculous at sometimes trying to get through there. And I, as was mentioned earlier, I voted no on the previous development that, across, across from this one, for reasons of traffic. And I just can't, I know, I know you said that the plan had been approved, a plan had been approved by the county. I believe that was with multiple entrances and exits. Is that correct?
Was with two accesses at Harrison Bridge. And that was prior to the Marydale intersection, too.
And we, we talked about the emergency exits that may at some point in time be used as other entrances, but that's nothing guaranteed with that. That's not something we can count on happening. So for those reasons, I just can't in good conscience support this. I just feel like right now we have a tremendous traffic overload on our infrastructure, in that, particularly in that area. And this would just add to the problem, I think. So that's my take on it.
Councilmember Williams.
I just wanted to say that I agree with just about everybody up here. The traffic over there is real bad, and I don't think that the traffic light is really gonna fix that. And even if you were to, at some point, get another exit out of the neighborhood onto Fairview, all that, I guess all that's still gonna go over to Harrison Bridge, too. And it's just gonna make that a lot more congested than it already is. I feel like there's accidents on that corner like every day. So, and I agree with Mr. O'Rear that this neighborhood coming up right behind Marydale is just gonna put a lot, all at one time. And like everybody else said, the traffic is already pretty bad, so I don't think I'd be able to approve this.
Counsel? Okay. Sounds like I might be the only dissenting voice. I agree, traffic is really tough in, in that region. But there is already an approved plan in place that can be built out for 239 units. This proposal is 210 and brings it into the city where we have some say so over what it looks like. This is going to be developed, folks. And here's why. I hope everybody on this council, I believe they all do fundamentally believe in the constitution and your constitutional rights. One of your most fundamental rights is the right that you have when you own property, property ownership. Every member of council up here lives in a neighborhood that at some point was developed. And if you went to develop your neighborhood today, I hear this council saying, oh, no, no way. There are two main families down there at that intersection that everybody should know their names, the Martins and the Harlings. What I hear being said here tonight is that, well, it was fine for the Martins when they went and sold their property and made millions and millions of dollars, but the Harlings have waited too long, too bad, so sad. I don't agree with that thought process. It is as if, if each of you will think of it as a property owner, if somebody came to you and said, I will offer you millions of dollars for your property, and the city says, sorry. I just did a quick estimation based on what I see other properties selling for in this region. I figure it's worth, that property is worth at least three and a half million dollars as, as it is developed. If you keep it as it is, if we just deny it, if you keep it as it is, and I would love to see it stay farmland and woods, I really would. If you would love to see it stay farmland and woods, buy it and keep it farmlands and woods. That's how you get a say so over what happens to a piece of property. But I found out my estimate was way low. The number that the Harlings are looking at is far in excess of three and a half million dollars. If it were to stay residential as it is today, Zillow says it's worth about $750,000. We're talking about taking money out of these people's pocket, okay? We're talking about your neighbors who live in Simpsonville taking away the rights to their property. Again, think about it if it was you. Somebody was offering you 10 times what your house is worth today, and the city said, no, sorry, can't do that. I just, I, I think that, I, I don't like what is going on with development and the, the sprawl. By the way, residential estate is a recipe for sprawl. That is spreading out more homes, which causes more spread out into the county and increases traffic when you do residential estate in the unincorporated parts of the county. If you don't believe me, go drive around anywhere in Fulton County and look at all the residential estate neighborhoods that have covered that county. It's a, it's not a good recipe, but, but fundamentally, what I'm most concerned about is, I, I think it's, I think it's unlawful taking. I believe it's an unlawful taking for us to deny this plan. And I think we're also kicking ourselves when we turn this down, when it's already approved to be developed at a higher density than what these folks are asking to do. So like I say, I would rather it stay farm and woods, but I don't have the money to buy that property. I, I don't believe that, that I have enough money to get a say so over what that looks like. So like I say, might be the only dissenting vote, so. Any more comments from council? Councilmember O'Shea.
The only way that this would be a taking is if it were currently annexed and it were currently zoned for what they want to do, and we told them no. We went outside of our own planning. That would be a taking. That would be keeping them from doing anything with the property. I just want to get that out there. That's not what we're doing.
Councilmember Pinkerton.
Just a point of, to clarify, this property that we keep hearing that was previously approved was approved in 2007, 2008, and then it wasn't developed. One could assume that was a bad time for everybody, including my 401K. Maybe that's the reason why it wasn't developed. Could that same property be built, the one that you say is approved, today, approved by the county? The way I understand it, it's not. You changed it a little bit, but you've been back to the county, and the county said no. So how could you go back to the mayor's point and say it's gonna be developed when the county's already said no, based on your two entrance concern? Can, can you go back and build it like the old property? Based on the county's?
You're never gonna get two access points to Harrison Bridge Road.
I realize that, but I'm assuming.
You're saying you're never gonna get that. So that, that, that is a deviation in the plan. Greenville County thinks that that deviation in the plan requires a major change. We came back with the major change with the one boulevard access and two emergency access. That plan was going to be approved. You had a different council that went into office January 1st, 2025, got all the way to third reading. Typically at third reading, there's no discussion at that point in time, but since there was a new, four new council members in place.
You hadn't answered my question, I don't think. Regardless of what council was in there, it wasn't approved. My question is, could you, based on the original plan that you have from 2008, start building on that property?
You could, you could.
So the county would approve it?
They've already approved it. The plan's approved. You could go get a grading permit on that plan, and you could go start grading that property. You're doing it at your own risk because you've got to get the blessing from DOT to have one access back out to Harrison Bridge Road. But sure, you could, you could grade that site, submit for grading permits, and go start land clearing activities on that property.
Would you do that?
Would I do that?
As a developer right now?
I mean, I think I would be having some conversations with DOT before I did that.
Right, okay. I will say too, I disagree. I think if you went back to an RE that reduced the density down, it would be kind of an easy approval. I, I don't buy that going from 200 or 300, whatever housing that's in there now, down to 30 or 40. Increasing that way throughout the county makes it worse. Seems to me like it makes it better, but that's my two cents.
Mr. Derby? What's the density on RE?
16,000 square foot lots.
So roughly three homes per acre?
Roughly, yes, sir.
Well, you gotta take in.
70 acres, that's 210 homes. This is 210 units.
Point of order. That's incorrect because you can't just say that. You have to factor in your, your frontage road and your width.
You're correct, you're correct. So 16,000 square foot lots plus the, the streets and roads, but, but some number that would be more than 30 or 40 on 70 acres.
Correct. You'd also account for stormwater as well.
Right. Thank you. Mr. O'Rear.
Yeah, and Mayor, I understand your sentiment, I really do. But, you know, historically, until we formed a republic and even after, only landowners got to vote. That's it. So a lot of these people out here, back up then, they wouldn't have had a voice. It would have been only the people that owned that land. What, what we're talking about here is now you've got thousands and thousands of people in Simpsonville that will be detrimentally affected to the favor of one. And that's, that's the whole point. I understand what you're saying, I have sympathy for that. But we, we aren't so far removed from most people not even being able to participate in our process. And the people that could were the people you're defending, the ones that owned the land that had the money. If you go look back at the maps of South Carolina from eons ago, you'll, you'll see what I'm talking about. But I do, I do sympathize with your point. I just don't think it, you know, one, one person can, should override roughly 30,000 people of Simpsonville's quality of life.
Counsel? All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. On the motion to approve AXZ 2025-02, proposed annexation of the property located at 429 and 537 Harrison Bridge Road, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, all opposed signify by saying no.
No.
That motion fails by a vote of one to six. Item 7C, TX dash, by the way, before I move on to that item, would anybody like to take a short recess? Just, I'm just making sure. I am, what's that? I'm going to give a moment for the public to exit the meeting. Administrator Graceley.
Oh, that would be better.
Why are our windows not working?
Probably because it was cloudy out until the sun just peeped behind the crowd, and it may take a few minutes for it to realize. Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't change automatically, but it will soon. It should.
Everything of the.
The top panels, not the bottom.
The top two panels do, so. All right. We're ready to move on now. It seems like things have settled down, so. 7C, TX dash 2025 dash 01, miscellaneous refinements to the zoning ordinance. Mr. Derby, will you summarize, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I do sit in your seat, Ms. Graceley, and that's probably the worst seat because that's right in your eye. So I definitely can understand. Sorry. This is the TX 2025-01, the signed ordinance amendment. What you have in front of you is language that was strike through from the last time this came before you. The last meeting, the whole, the portions in red were things that came out of our workshop and concludes, sorry, the reflection. R1, geez, 4 was changed from 40, 45 days to 60 days. R2 was updated to strike through the real estate portion. And R2, 2, changed the height of the post signs from three feet to six feet. These were things that were discussed during the workshop, and it was rewritten by staff. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Derby. So let me point out that this item was postponed from the March 25th, 2025 Committee of the Hall, so no motion is necessary as it was moved in the previous meeting. So the current motion that we're discussing is a motion by Councilmember Root with a second by Councilmember Pinkerton to move TX dash 2025 dash 01, miscellaneous refinements to the zoning ordinance to the next business meeting. Discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven yeses and zero noes. Item 7D, presentation of the fiscal year 2025 dash 2026 budget. Administrator Graceley, will you summarize, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. You received last week via email from me a budget presentation, which I will go through. I don't know if you want to do that prior to the motion, or if you, you want me to just do a brief summary and then motion?
Why don't you go ahead and go through the slides, and then we'll do the motion?
Okay, sure. So as I have done in past years, this budget includes the summary that you received and that you have before you on your monitor. I like to go through the first part of this presentation by showing you the personnel in each department, because I think it's always important to recognize that the city provides services and the largest majority of our budgeted expenditures are a result of personnel to provide those services. So just to give you an idea of how many employees are in each department, we have approximately 200 employees, 13 in the administrative department, as you can see. Police department has 65 employees. Fire department, throughout the headquarters and the six fire stations, 75 employees. Public Works Department is 28. Simpsonville Parks and Recreation, 27 employees, 10 of whom are part-time, because they do seasonal work depending on whether they're playing basketball, baseball, football. So I'll be happy to, well, we'll wait until after the motion's made, but we can certainly discuss those allocated positions and if you have any questions about those. I want to give you the budget highlights for the proposed fiscal year 25, 26. I am proposing a 5% cost of living increase for all employees who are hired through, who were hired through the end of last month. So this would not apply to new hires in April, May, or June, because it's so close to the end of the previous fiscal year. So this would include all employees who are currently on our payroll or were before March 31st. We did initially with our health insurance renewal have a very frightening 25.4% increase. We were able to negotiate with Blue Choice to get the increase down to 12 and a half percent. I was disappointed that we couldn't get it to a single digit, but unfortunately, we did have a very high claims year, and that is the result of the renewal is having, you know, more claims and more payments going out than the premiums coming in. We did put the plan on the market, and we had a couple other offers, and I'd like for somebody to remind me to speak to that when we get to further discussion. It does include the same $250,000 for stormwater that. further discussion. It does include the same $250,000 for stormwater that we have in the current budget. It includes the last of what is a three installment transfer of $250,000 into our capital project fund for the heavy rescue truck. We ordered that truck two years ago. It is not constructed yet. There's a very large backlog for fire trucks. A lot of that was due to ARPA funding that was available in 2022, and so that a lot of folks were ordering new equipment that they could not otherwise afford to order. It retains the $1,000 council discretionary fund per ward that you can use for booster clubs or, you know, small projects that you can do for that amount. I have removed the $47,000 Green Link allocation that is in the current budget. It does not appear that Green Link is going to be able to revise the intergovernmental agreement with Greenville County or Greenville City to incorporate board seats for Malden or Simpsonville, which was part of the agreement that Simpsonville and Malden would each gain a seat on the board to keep Route 601 operational and the funding that we were providing. But I don't think that that's going to happen, so that money has been removed. There is something that's an exception to what I normally do with the budget in this one, and that is allocating some funding for salary adjustments citywide, you know, public safety, and then down from there, based on some things that we wanted to incorporate to try to help with the compression of salaries. You know, as we raise the minimums for each salary classification, and, you know, you get these 4% and 5% COLA increases, it tends to compress over a couple or three years, because you have to continue to raise the minimum to attract new employees. And so that will help us reduce some of the compression that we see among some of our employees who have been here for several years. This plan includes no borrowing from fund balance in the general fund. It is a balanced general fund budget. There is a small surplus in the Public Works Enterprise Fund budget, fairly large surplus in Hospitality and Accommodations Tax Fund budget, and sewer budget surplus. I have also summarized the capital purchases by department for this proposed budget, which I do every year, to give you an idea of what the capital requests are, because those are, of course, for this proposed budget year and will not move forward unless there are other capital purchases put on the budget next year. So we'll get more detailed with those later. I think this is probably a good point to stop the presentation and have a motion, and then I can continue.
Thank you. Motion is in order. Counsel? Councilmember Rocher?
Mayor, I move that council approved presentation. Not the presentation, but the FY 2025-2026 budget as presented.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Rocher, with a second from Councilmember O'Rear. Discussion? Councilmember Roop?
Just a few questions, I'm sorry. The surplus of the hospitality accommodations tax and the sewer fund budget, I want to make sure I'm reading this right. What is in parentheses is the total amount we took in, or that's the surplus?
That would be the surplus. And we are allowed to not have balanced budgets in those enterprise funds or special revenue accounts, which is why we're allowed to have a surplus. In the general fund budget by state law, it has to balance.
Is there a proposal tonight, or what we'll be hearing of how we'll reuse these monies?
We have already allocated all of the, we've accounted for all of the requests and all of the expenditures that we anticipate. These accounts just have higher revenues than expenditures. So no, that money would just continue to go into the fund balance of those special accounts, meaning hospitality and accommodations tax, special revenue fund would increase based on that surplus at the end of the next fiscal year.
So the accommodation tax can, if, and I know it's confusing, and there's a lot of earmark money for that, can that be used for parks and recs for the city?
And we have used a large majority of that for Heritage Park improvements, for some proposed smaller items for the park here. And some of the, those funds do reimburse the general fund for staff time that can be accrued back to that, because of course, there's administration involved, finance, my, part of my salary, and those things are already accounted for, and they get transferred back to the general fund.
So just a question, and maybe we can't do this, that's why I'm asking. It would seem to me that we could use the, let's just use the hospitality accommodations tax, almost 100, 1.5 million. Could we not use those monies to fund the parks and recs, which what we would fund through the general fund, and use the additional 1.5 from the general fund to address some of our flood issues? Is that legal?
No. State law is very specific about where hospitality and accommodations tax revenue funds can be used. It has to be a tourism-related activity, so it doesn't apply to any local recreation. It would apply to some improvements that could be considered improvements that would bring people in from outside of the city.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember O'Rear?
Yeah, first, I don't want to speak for anybody, but I think Councilman Roop, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's kind of in line with what I was saying about impact fees a while back, is that if you offset, if you spend properly the money in HNA in areas you can, the money you would have spent from the general fund is then free.
If you can make it fit within state law. We have addressed all of the expenditures that are legal expenditures through that revenue source.
Well, to get to my, first, I want to thank you for nixing the Green Link allocation. I don't know if, it sounds like it'd be more of a mutual thing. I don't know if I'm buying their thing about board seats, because I know they appointed at least two people this past year, and I don't know how they work, if they have specific seats for specific people. Well, that's another argument for another day. Did they give any indication of, are they going to terminate service? Are they going to continue service just at a loss? Because they operate on loss anyways.
So the last meeting that we had between the city of Greenville, Greenville County, Green Link, Malden, and Simpsonville, the issue was, without changing the intergovernmental agreement, and it would require approval from Greenville City and Greenville County to do that, they would not be able to give us what we asked for, for our allocation. They did not say whether or not the route would continue without that funding. My suggestion was that the county cover the 100, and I think it's $106,000 or $7,000 for the local share for 601, which Malden, you know, and Simpsonville agreed to pay their proportionate amounts of that. But Malden's not paid them anything. We've not paid them anything, because they've not been able to give us what we requested in order for that. It was left as an open-ended question. I don't know if the route will be discontinued. I don't anticipate that it will be, but I don't want to say for sure that it won't, because it very well could. If they're not able to make up that deficit in some way, they may have to discontinue it. But for now, it's, that's not been part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel? Councilmember Pinkerton?
Can you put up the original slide, just so I have a reference? Yeah, so first question. Allocation for salary adjustments for citywide compensation study, I think that's a good idea, but I'm assuming what's going to come out of that is you'll find a range of projected salaries or suggested salary ranges for each individual employee throughout the city. Is that--
Correct.
And if you get that study, I'm assuming it'll come back this year, would that affect this year's 5% funding, or would that be something we look into the next year?
So the 5% cost of living goes into effect on July 1, or the closest payroll to July 1. The class and compensation plan is currently being done, but we don't anticipate the completion of that until about October. Maybe September, if they're able to expedite a little bit. But right now, we're in the process of reviewing all of the job descriptions and making sure that we've included all of the large items that fall within that job description. Of course, as we say in all job descriptions, you know, other things may be requested of employees, but we try to hit the main parts of their job with the city. So what we've done is the money that we're setting aside, it's all going in the administrative budget, because it will be allocated from HR and finance. And when the classification and compensation study comes back, you know, the hope would be that it would be enough to provide all of the increases that correspond with the study. It's about $411,000 that we're putting aside. If it does not cover all of those expenses, then at least it would be a good start. And then perhaps in the FY 27 budget next year, there could maybe have, there would maybe be an opportunity to reserve some-- I'm sorry, I can't talk. Expenditure toward completing that. So it may be a two- or three-year process, but this at least gets us started as quickly as possible. We don't want it to lag too far behind, because then what happens is you get compression again. So, you know, I'm hopeful that the $411,000 set aside will take care of most of it. The problem is, it's not just salary adjustment. Then it goes into employment taxes and retirement contributions, and so it's not a pure $411,000 to dole out to employees. We also have to account for the indirect cost from payroll taxes.
I think it's a good idea. And of course, if it happens in October, it'd be a good end-of-the-year bump if it worked out that way. So that answered my question for that. Now, a couple more. And we talked about this. I actually sent in some questions, and one thing just to point out, we had $250,000 last year allocated for stormwater funds that we never used, and essentially that is still there at the moment, and it goes away, and then we get 250 more again. So I had some, a little bit of conversation with the mayor, just for counsel to think about, is perhaps looking at, and by the way, we did not get funding for the stormwater study through any grants. That's out the window. So I'm thinking that just putting it out there for future that we look at allocating this money and maybe some more later in doing a stormwater study, so we really know what our issues are. I was really hoping we would get that grant, so we could get a little bit of clarity on our stormwater problems. And that's it for me. Thank you.
So what I will say, and I know you and I have discussed this, about the stormwater allocation, is the money won't carry over in the budget, but you can assume there would be at least a $250,000 surplus at the end of the fiscal year, because that money was not spent. So then it doesn't disappear. It goes to fund balance, so it's not allocated for a specific purpose. But with the 250 that would be beginning again in July, if we put an RFP out and we get proposals back and we know what the stormwater study is going to cost, let's just say for argument's sake, it's 500, because that's easy math, then council could at that point vote to take money out of fund balance to put with the budgeted funds to complete that study in the next fiscal year. So there's still a way to do it. It just means that, you know, it would, you know, the budget doesn't balance if I put a $500,000 line item for stormwater in there. But the money will still be there, and it's always up to council. If you want to propose taking money out of fund balance for a specific purpose that's for the public good, you can always do that.
Thank you.
Counsel? Counsel? Councilmember Rocher?
I appreciate seeing that money is being set aside for more ADA equipment for Graceley Park. The citizens will be thrilled to hear that. We are needing some upgrades at Heritage Park, so the balance that I see dedicated to Heritage Park, can we anticipate some improvements to the playground equipment and some of the things that are starting to wear down?
So it's not allocated in the budget. It's not an expense line, and I will tell you why. Again, this can be a council change mid-year or whatever you want to do, because there will be surplus in there. So you can vote to do that at a later time. Because the state did away with the earmarks, that means there's going to be a shortfall of funding for the downtown project. You know, we were hoping that the state would fill that gap, and then the city would have all of the money in its coffers to do that project as it's currently designed. The fund balance that you're seeing in HNA tax could be used to repay a second bond issue, if council then has to borrow the money for that purpose. You know, my light's dimming more and more. I keep thinking maybe there's a way to still get funding from the state for this, and there may be. I don't want to say that all hope is lost, but in the event that it's not, it would be up to this council to say, we need to do this project. You know, the traffic realignment's very important. Having the festival streets very important. Upgrading the street lighting and making downtown more attractive is very important. You can borrow $13 million today on, under an installment purchase revenue bond, and the repayment amount would be roughly an additional $1.2 million per year. That would go on top of the bond debt that we're currently paying for the bond issue we did in 2021. So it's doable, and it's still within our bonding capacity to do that. So I didn't want to allocate that money for a specific purpose right now, in the event that council decides in a few months. We want to do this project the way we planned to do it. And so then there could be a bond issue. That money would be used for repayment, because it's there. It's surplus money. And then it would just have to be in every budget thereafter until the term of the bond is paid.
Just had to remind you to talk about the increase with the healthcare across Blue Shield.
Yes. So there were two other relatively competitive quotes that we got back. Cigna was a 10% renewal. We wouldn't be renewing with them, but their price was 10% of what Blue Choice was 12.5, and Cigna would be a 10% increase over what we're currently paying. The health plan was basically the same. You know, deductible would be the same, out-of-pocket costs would be the same. Most of the copays are the same, prescription copays. The issue is, it's very difficult for employees when we change health plans, because some preferred drugs with Blue Choice are not preferred drugs with Cigna, and so some people might be forced to change medications. The other thing is that Blue Choice does get deeper discounts than other providers, because they're the big player in this state. And so ultimately, our claims history at the end of the next year with Blue Choice, unless we have major claims like we did this year, could potentially be lower, because the discounts are deeper that they get from hospitals and from healthcare providers. And so it might impact our renewal next year by going with another vendor. The other one was a United Health Plan, and it was 8%, which looks really attractive on the surface, but it was a completely different plan. No copays at all. So everybody would be paying for their visits in full until they reach that out-of-pocket cost. Employees, that would be very difficult for them. The other thing that I've done, and I'm sorry I didn't put it on the budget highlights, is we've eliminated, to cover the cost of the renewal, our contract with Proactive MD. So effective July 1, we will no longer have that as a benefit to employees for free primary care. What we found, looking back at the usage for Proactive and our claims history, is that the usage continually went down, and so not all employees were taking advantage of that benefit, and our claims history was still very high. You know, because most of the claims don't come from primary care visits. They come from major health issues. So-- So that's not in here anymore. So Proactive will only be a benefit provided through June 30th if council approves the budget as presented.
What's included in that Proactive?
Pardon?
What's included in Proactive? Is it like doctor's care?
It is. It's basically primary care. It's where employees can go unless they, a lot prefer to stay with their primary care physician that they've had for years, but I didn't have one when I moved here, so Proactive has always been a good option for me. You know, you go, you have a check, and then they do an annual wellness check as well. There are certain prescriptions that they provide free of charge, like most antibiotics and some like Singulair and those types of medicines, some blood pressure medicines, and so the employee would have zero out-of-pocket expense if they used Proactive. But like I said, it was, it was only being used by a small percentage of employees. It was a lot at first, and then it sort of, over the past couple of years, dwindled down. So I don't feel like we're sacrificing a really important benefit, and we're able to then cover the health insurance renewal with taking that Proactive service away.
One more question. The money that we had allocated before when we voted to participate in Green Link for the Simpsonville route, where did that money go? Where did it go to a different?
We never expended that money, so like the stormwater money, it would just add to fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel? Councilmember Pinkerton.
One more question. I know it's getting late. The, it's unfortunate, but some of our projected roads we were going to pave aren't getting paved this year. Does our RFP contract require their asphalt price based on the oil price index?
So the way we do our road resurfacing is the county transportation committee, which receives the C funds, which is part of our state gas tax, it's 3.3% of what now I think is a 20% gas tax or so, something like that. It goes, it gets allocated back out to the counties, and the county transportation committee then decides what to do with that money. They allocate a certain amount of that every year toward the municipal match resurfacing program, and then they reserve the rest for applications for special projects, which, you know, we've gotten now for this emergency signal and pedestrian crossing and other things. We did get some C funds for the downtown project. So what happens is, because we participate in that, they match us up to the allocated amount dollar for dollar. So we're able to take advantage of the funds that they put into that. And then they have a contractor that works directly for the county transportation committee that puts the road list for the entire county together every year. All the municipalities submit their road requests, and they take those numbers and put them together, and then they bid it out. And so they had just bid it out in March, and that's when we were notified that based on the actual bids, we can only, and the amount of money we're putting in, this is how many roads we can do, because the asphalt prices are the same for everybody. Greenville County doesn't get a better deal on them than we get on them.
I get it, I get it, but asphalt's based on oil price index.
Yes, correct.
Oil's going down.
Right.
And so you probably don't have it, but the county does, based on what we wanted to get, what we thought it was going to pave versus what the actual price came back in. We don't know what that, the difference is, like?
We do. Mr. Director West, he probably doesn't have it in front of him. I can send that to you. They do give us, you know, what our roads, I think we had 1.93 miles that we had hoped to resurface, and it was a list of about 15 or so roads, and we had to decrease that based on the unit pricing for the overall bid. It is based on petroleum, that is true, but the increases that we see now are also based on the fact that there are fewer contractors that are bidding on the work, and so when you don't have competition, they tend to bid higher. It's also based on labor costs continually increasing. They're required to have flagmen out there to do these road resurfacing projects, so all of those requirements cause the cost to go up as well.
And I'll end it, but I guess my final question is, if we knew we had this amount of money and actually it costs this amount of money, if we, if we thought it was of value to the city to pave these roads which need it, we could take it out of general fund and put it towards that, or does that work that way?
We, we could, but it would have to, it would have to come out of fund balance. Like, I don't have any more room in this proposed budget to put more money toward resurfacing.
Okay, come out the fund, we could do it out of fund.
We could, but I don't know if that would be a wise expenditure because part of the problem with the amount of money we're spending and getting fewer roads is that there was one bidder. And so hopefully next year, there, there will be more than one bidder.
Okay.
I wish they had gotten the bid package out sooner because it was after DOT had already put all of their bid packages out, and so when contractors aren't hungry, and you know, because you were in the construction business, you get higher prices. When they're hungry, you get better prices, and so unfortunately, they weren't very hungry this year, which increased our price.
Breaching.
Yes.
Councilmember Rocher.
Concerning Ladene Court that we had to tear up.
Mm-hmm.
How soon? I don't see that on here. Does that go on here?
So the good news about Ladene Court is because that was a sewer relay, we can repave that road with sewer funds. It doesn't have to come out of road paving from the general fund because we tore it up to replace the sewer line. We can repave the road with sewer funds.
How soon will that happen?
It'll happen relatively soon, as soon as they're finished doing the sewer work, and then, you know, they'll have to get a contractor out there that's qualified to resurface the road, but it shouldn't take very long.
Thank you.
That'll all be paid under that skip grant as well.
Counsel? On the motion to approve the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget and move this item for first reading to the next agenda of the next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. That motion carries by a vote of seven yeses and zero nos. That concludes our business for this evening. If there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.